If we're trying to identify somebody, we're only going to send those out to people that have actually created accounts.
Okay.
I think you and you have to turn on notifications to get notifications from you.
Correct. That's the big thing. So if you want to, you just turn on notifications.
Correct, that's the big thing. So if you want to, you just turn notifications, you don't have to put any personal information in, and you're gonna get them.
Sure.
Okay, so if you want to receive those, you have to create an account and then turn on notifications.
We don't actually have any of that, that just goes through tip four one one.
Right.
If you want to receive notifications from us, then you have to create an account and turn on those notifications.
Thank you for clarifying. Something you said earlier too, that I think is important, you said it's a tool, it's not a toy. Things that are specific maybe to your neighborhood, your ward, that aren't like barking dogs and things like that. I suggest that people reach out to their councilman instead of, you know, always blowing up your tip line for things because then it may become too redundant.
I get them all the time, and it's fine because to that person at that time, it's important. So I'll take your barking dog call and I'll forward it to the nuisance and we'll go talk to the neighbor and why their dog is barking. So like I say, we'll take them all, because you never know what it could turn into something else.
We'd use this app, everything from abandoned vehicles to homicide investigations.
Correct.
And it's coming handy.
And if they want to copy a link off a website, you know, I've got stuff Craigslist sent to me that was not very appropriate. I've made cases off that. They can copy links off Facebook, which we have one for like gun violence. Hey, I saw a picture of this kid, you arrested, but well, they do the Facebook stalking kind of for us. Here's the link, they'll copy paste the link to the text area and I'll go to it. Now, in that area where they can post their tip, they can say, I want to be contacted. I've had people leave me their cell phone number and their email address, but that's solely up to them. You know, you can just put something real brief and be done. I got one today that's really long, I don't care. Well, I'll cert through to pick out what we need to send to the right people to look into the problem. So loud party calls, I get those too, that's fine, I can hand that over to corporal couch, we can look into that. Barking dogs, dilapidated cars, that's what we do, so.
And kind of along those same lines, I do want to caution people, if there's a crime in progress, please don't go through the app. Please call nine one one or contact the department directly. The app isn't necessarily monitored 24 hours. You know, Brad's not up 24 hours a day, so please, if it's a crime in progress, if it's a domestic situation, if it's happening right then, please call nine one one or contact us directly. Don't go through this anonymous app.
Yeah, like a loud party, says my neighbor's throwing a massive party, well, I'm only gonna find about Monday morning, I'll say, well, it's over.
Only if you're not invited.
You and me, Dave, you and me, buddy.
Hey, I'm, and all joking aside, I mean, if we really, if this city really wants to get a handle on our crime, and it sounds like every social media post they do, there's 70 sets of eyes, I've said it before, you guys have 70 sets of eyes. There's 42,000 sets of eyes in this city that can help you all do your job, and it's incumbent upon us to do so. Thank you very much.
Other part is the security cam registration.
Before we go, well, before we go move on, I guess what I'm interested in knowing, we're interested in knowing is how we can help you better advertise to the public about this.
Tell the people in your wards, use it, abuse it, put stuff in there for us, because like I say, I'm on it every day. I check it in the morning, I check it throughout the day. Anything that anyone in your ward has an issue with, that they don't want to call you in the middle of the night, or they want to, you know, let us know about someone dealing drugs out of a house, or something doesn't look quite right, put it on there. Like I say, I'm on it every day, I'm the administrator, and that's part of my routine in the mornings to check that every day to get it to the right officer so they can do their job to solve crimes in your ward.
I would hope that our local media partners would help us get the word out too, hopefully they'll, you know.
I was gonna say, we got one sitting here tonight, we just had a proclamation for his father, and I think John will. KFVS is recording this, I hope they do a story, I hope they do a piece with this, and so everybody sees, you know, get this out.
Hit me up, I'll talk to you. So, second of all, the security cam registration program, super easy. Like mayor said, everyone has Ring cameras, Blink cameras, what it pretty much is, you just give us your name and your address, and some way of contacting you that you have cameras that look out on the street, maybe you look at a vacant lot or somewhere. That's it, we don't capture your IP address, we don't get login information, we just, let's say we have a rash of theft from vehicles in a certain neighborhood. We can go there and say, okay, house one, four, and eight have cameras. We're gonna physically either call you on the phone or knock on your door and say, hey, do you mind looking at your system and see if you see something in this timeframe for us? You actually dig through your footage, not us, I don't want to do that. And we have no access whatsoever to any part of your video, but we just know, hey, we know in this area, there's a camera, hey, what do you got for us? You know, that helps us out adding with everything else we have.
Do you want us to let you know that information through tip 411? How do you want us to tell you we have cameras?
Um, well, you, we, you could put on there, hey, if someone's on tip one, say, hey, I have footage I saw on Facebook or whatever, this incident of X amount of, this X crime. They can go to the city's website, and the form is on the website.
There's a registration form, if you're wanting to register your camera, there's an actual registration form on the city's website.
Correct.
If you're not wanting to register your camera, then you can go through tip four one, let us know you have video footage. But if you're actually wanting to register your camera, so we know in advance what cameras are available, then we direct you to the website.
We find out under the police department, or where do we find that?
Yes.
So on the, on the KPD webpage, there's a registration form, okay.
You just had that pulled up, right?
Yes, it was just up on the screen.
Okay.
Oh, I do have a question or suggestion. You know how it is, I'm a visual person, I don't know a lot of people, but I gotta see somebody doing it, I gotta show different visuals. And I know you say go to the website, but most people is not gonna take time and go to the website to do this, to do that, because most people just, just their time or just all the wording that's on the page. Is it possible, and I'm not sure if you all doing this, that little visuals like on the social media sites of like where to go and how to just click on something, does it take you right there instead of just going to find it? Because sometimes people have to go find something, they just never even get there. But having, yeah, like, like, you know, just, or, or, you know, kids like videos, young people, 30 second, oh, you know. You got a great personality, I mean, you know, you got the uniform on, he's smiling, I mean, just those small, soft, but still learning things that's short, you know, and takes just a few seconds to do, or one or two sentences. I don't know about you, but after about two or three sentences, people stop reading half the time, you know. And I know we've probably been caught on that too, we got big binders and stuff, but we do got to take time and read it. But I think that it catered to different people with different backgrounds and also their time in that. But I do appreciate you chief, addressing this weekend, that's crucial, that's recognizing, we hear what the community's saying, and I appreciate that Dr. Haskin, our leadership is like, here's what you can do, like the mayor said, constructive assistance, because this was a critical time, but if we're not constructive about it, and don't put out the right information and connect to the right people, it can be more critical. So thank you for offering that, so I appreciate your work on that.
Ultimately, though, with the camera registration, that's really just helping you guys create a map of where cameras might be.
Correct, and we, that's internal, we don't like tell the world, hey, these people. No, it stays within our database, our RMS, so like I say, when our detectives are doing follow-up on a crime, they're gonna say, was there a video? You know, maybe the patrol officer didn't know at the time, maybe they're going call to call to call. When the detective gets the follow-up, they can go to our database and say, hey, in this block, there is two cameras on this block. They'll go and contact the resident, say, hey, do you mind looking for this crime between this timeframe on this date? And then they can, you know, put it on a jump drive, or they can, probably can't, email is probably too big, but it's a face-to-face contact to get that from them.
It does not give us direct access to your cameras, it just allows us to know which cameras are in the area that may be needed for investigative purposes.
How many, do you have any numbers on how many are registered now? I mean, is it?
We don't release that.
Okay, I mean, is it a good, is it a good number though? I mean, do people know about it?
We, it's been around for a while.
I know it's been around, but I didn't know how much the community really knows about it.
Hopefully, hopefully it's gonna spike after.
Right.
Well, I'll be registering my two, so, you know.
Go on our city's website, fill the form out, get it back to us, and we'll get it entered, and thank you for pushing that again, because it helps these guys out working the street, and they're detectives, it's just another tool for them to use.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Appreciate it very much. All right, and our last presentat, I'm sorry, any, okay, our last presentation tonight is the annual audit report for fiscal year 2024.
Some great, we can read, aren't we, here?
Yes.
A couple maps and everything.
Yeah, and I get to follow not only a discussion about what's new and exciting at the police department, but to have to follow a conversation about Mr. Rust, and all I have to offer is government finance and audits, that's not fair. No, I'll try to be brief. My name's Jeff Stroder with the firm Beasing K. Rowan Stroder here in town, and want to thank you for the opportunity to do the city's audit again. I'll try to give you a brief overview of what you have in the audit report. Thinking I might have a couple of new faces, if you haven't heard me before, sorry, but we'll try to make it through this. What we have is three reports that I've issued on your financial statements. The first report, it starts out by saying that it is my opinion that the net position of all the funds of the city are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with general accepted accounting principles in the United States of America. Something basically along those lines. That sentence is what makes it an unmodified report, or unmodified opinion, that's a clean opinion, that's the one you want on your financial statements. So it goes on to explain quite a bit of information, the city's responsibility for the financial statements. What my responsibilities are as the auditor, it's a fascinating read. The, it goes on to explain that there's a lot of information in that bound audit report that's in addition to your basic financial statements. It explains that we don't actually issue an opinion on the other information, however, we have applied procedures to that other information, and we do extend that in relation to the financial statements themselves, we do believe that that information is also fairly stated. So the last paragraph of the report goes on to explain that when I conduct an audit in accordance with government auditing standards, I'm responsible for another report. That other report has to do with the city's internal control processes and procedures about how do we accumulate the information to be able to put together financial statements. We don't actually issue an opinion on those internal controls, but we have to understand them to be able to conduct the audit. We have to know how they're designed, and we also have to know, are they actually working? So if we would find anything that we would consider to be a deficiency in the city's internal controls, this is where we would report that. And the report goes on to explain that we found no weaknesses or deficiencies in those internal controls. So the second part of that report that's issued in accordance with government auditing standards has to do with the city's compliance with various laws and regulations and contracts and grant agreements that are financial in nature. So we do design tests that are specific to look for those instances of non-compliance, and we are reporting that we found no instances of non-compliance with any of the testing that we performed. So the financial statements themselves follow that. I know you're familiar with your finances, I generally make the practice not to stand here and go back over all of your finances and tell you about them again. What I do offer is kind of a description, sometimes with some of my clients, to be able to put that clean opinion on the financial statements, we might recommend quite a bit of changes need to be made before we can actually say they're clean. One of the things I wanted to offer to you is that we did not, in my recollection, I know we made no significant recommendations, and I'm not sure off the top of my head if we even made any recommendations to make changes to those finances. So I offer that to you, give you some kind of an idea about the reliability of the information that you've been making decisions on for the last six months, since we had the opportunity to be able to come in with a complete audit, so.
You need to shoot off some fireworks, or, you know, that's, what you just said is really great news, and I think should be, you know, very, make the public very confident, very happy.
A lot of times with my conversations with boards, that part just kind of goes, and sometimes it's just met with glassed over eyes. But to me, it is a very important part, because like I said, you're making decisions based on these financial statements, and you have been for the last several months, and had we come in and said, okay, now your official financial statements look nothing like what you've been making decisions on, that would be a surprise that I would want to know about if I were in your shoes. But that's why hopefully that gives some assurance about what you've been doing and what you've been relying on. So the last part of my report, the third report, is required whenever you spend more than $750,000 of the federal government's money. They have a whole nother level of audit that they expect from me. And I will report that you had a little over $11.8 million expended of federal dollars. We are required to test a certain percentage of that in detail. The two programs that we tested were the airport improvement program, which was a little over $8.9 million in federal dollars, and the coronavirus expenditures were a little bit more than $1.5 million of federal dollars that were expended. Now, for both of these, again, I'm back into compliance, that's the main part of this test. The federal government has specific compliance requirements that they want me to test and give them an opinion on whether or not you complied. Mostly, it's the obvious, did you spend the money on what the grant said you were supposed to spend it on? Did you not spend it on things you weren't supposed to spend it on? Did you prepare accurate reports to be able to explain where the money went, were they filed timely, things like that? And what we have is another unmodified opinion, it's a clean opinion, that we found no instances of non-compliance with any of the requirements for those two programs that we tested. Now, they have a second piece that they want to know about. Not only did you comply with the rules, but did you have intentional mechanisms in place to make sure that you complied? Did you have internal controls in place? They want to make sure that you didn't just get lucky. So what we did for each of the programs that we tested, we, we looked at the compliance requirements, and then we looked to see what is the most important internal control that we have to make sure that we are not going to have a problem here. And then we tested those internal controls. And what we report here is that we found no deficiencies in those internal controls related to those compliance requirements for those grants. So the nutshell version is, I've got three reports, all unmodified opinions. We had no findings or recommendations for internal controls or compliance in any of the areas that we tested. So that's the nutshell version of the report. So if anybody has any questions about what we did, what we found, how we went about it, I'd be glad to try to tackle any, any questions you might have about that document.
Mr. Stroder, how many audits have you completed for the city? How many years of audits have you completed for the city?
That's, that's a good question, I don't remember.
More than one, then.
A lot, a lot.
Okay. I'd say at least 12, 15.
Yeah, I, I feel like I remember you in here the last time I was around. I guess my follow-up question to that, since you've done quite a few of these, is I would assume the last number of years, the audits have gotten a bit more complex.
They've gotten much more complex, the reporting requirements, the testing requirements for us, quite a few things have changed over the years.
Sure.
But that's something, you know, we've had some years where we've had a few things to talk about, where we could make some improvements, but I would say most years, we've had years like this, where, where all of the tests that we perform worked the way they were supposed to.
It sounds like in light of that complexity the last few years, the internal controls haven't suffered because of the additional requirements and additional complexities with federal monies and things, so.
Well, it, it's one of the things that, that we're actively looking at on every audit that we work with, are the folks who are responsible for the money, do they, are they active in assessing risk, you know, what could go wrong? What do we have the opportunity to put mechanisms in place to address where those risks are? And that's something that's actively done here. So that, that, that goes a long way as to making my conversation with you go a lot quicker.
I just wanted to really quickly thank you very much for your, for doing all this, putting this all together. This is a lovely document to receive, it is incredibly well done. I really do want to thank Lisa and her staff, I know Lisa's directly behind you, but this, this is, this is a lot to track. I mean, the municipal operations and budgeting of a city the size of Cape Girardeau is a lot, and it falls on Lisa and her team. And so they do an incredible job pulling together these numbers and supporting these types of audits, and making sure that the city continues to run financially smoothly. So thank you very much, Lisa, for, and, and everybody on your staff to helping us have this unmodified audit. You know, the, the term, they, really, there should be a better term than unmodified audit, because unmodified, you know, after years of doing this, it's like, ooh, yay, unmodified audit. But really, it should be like, this stupendous, there should be like some, like fireworks kind of. There should be like some fireworks kind of, kind of a thing. But thank you very much.
When you put things like that in the hands of creative people like certified public accountants, this is the best that we come up with.
I'll take unmodified. It works.
I appreciate you bringing up the folks that we work with. When it is the case, I like to pass that along, that everybody we worked with, and it was an extensive list of people that we required information from, but everybody we worked with was very professional, very helpful, very courteous to our staff. And that's been our experience working with the people that you've put in place to be responsible for these types of things. And I just wanted to pass that along, that that's been our experience working with your people.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good segue, because I wanted to build off what Councilman Preston said anyway. And as amazing as Lisa is, and truly amazing, I think one of, some of the things that go unseen are her mentorship with the, all the department heads and directors. And really, this, this type of report wouldn't be possible if it were not for all of those, all of you department heads staying on top of your funds, your grants, everything that you manage. And it's really kudos not just to Lisa and her team, but also to all the department heads.
Absolutely. If I could just add, and several of you already stated what I was going to state, so I'll just add, say ditto to all of that. You know, every now and then, we were talking earlier about misstatements or falsehoods stated in social media. Every now and then, I do read, you know, someone stating, well, the city should have an audit, or where's the... And so I always enjoy this time of year, just so that we have the chance to say to the public, we do have an audit every year. We typically pass with flying colors. And by the way, on the city website, every annual budget and every annual audit is posted. Nicolet is at citiofcape.org/budgets? Okay, yes, I was right. So if folks want to peruse this or the even thicker annual budget, you can do that anytime you want at your own home. Yeah, I think we have 28 different funds in the city. And at times, there are appropriate ways that money from different funds get transferred and used to different funds. There's a lot of inappropriate ways we can mess that up, but just to reiterate, you've stated clearly, we're not doing that. And so, yes, I'd like to thank Dr. Haskin, you and your whole team, the finance department led by Ms. Mills. It's just really great information to know, like I said, very confidence building for us and for the public to get this report. Anyone else?
I do want to say, the first thing that comes to mind is transparency. So I want to thank Dr. Haskin, Lisa, and his team, because this is transparency. At the end of the day, it all leads back to the dollar, and that means the dollar that's been allocated using all our funding is being good stewardship over the money that we received from taxpayers, and that's very important. And so I think that's a lot to be said if you think in the simple terms, instead of being unmodified, we are in good standing for all those that need another word for it. And so I thank you, and that's a testament for the work. And the city is being transparent, and our internal controls are a testament to the work that we're doing and continue to do. And like the mayor said, any other information, if you have hours to read, we'd be more than happy to share it with you. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stroder.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. All right, counsel, any other communications and reports, or anyone? Nate?
Yeah, I had two things that I wanted to speak about that really hit home, a little too close to home over the last week. One of them has already been mentioned a couple of times, and that was the event this weekend. As someone who has children of a variety of ages that are active, we spent many an evening or many a weekend at the sportsplex, very easily could have been there at the sportsplex this weekend. We were not. And for that egregious behavior and unacceptable behavior that occurred in the incident, I mean, you can watch, you can see YouTube videos about this occurring in those congested, high-intensity environments of these type of competitive tournaments all across the nation. And so I guess you could look at it as maybe, you know, it was only a matter of time, even though that doesn't in any means make it acceptable at all. But given that, I wanted to also extend my kudos and appreciation, not only for the KPD, but for the Parks and Rec staff for handling that situation, controlling it, and detaining the individual in a relatively rapid fashion. And in that same vein, I wasn't going to comment on this, but also to build off of the great points the mayor made, yeah, there was false information spread. And I don't think we can say it enough that there are social media outlets and pages that like to present themselves as credible news sources, when really, they are no more than gossipers and rumor mill spreaders. You know, nobody likes a gossip. Nobody likes a rumor mill. We have very credible, and that may be an understatement, credible media partners present and a great PIO that we could, that we share information with, as well as what's released by our own KPD and our own information that we offer as a city. That's your source of truth. If you listen to the others, it's no more than, people don't realize, people behind those Facebook pages are really just a neighbor down the street. Are you going to go down there and ask them, like, hey, what do you think about whatever you heard across the scanner? No, it's not a credible news source. Listen to our media partners, listen to what comes out of the city and comes from the PD. In that same vein, the second thing I was going to talk about was not often do you get awakened by a flurry of activity outside of your house on Thursday evening, three doors down from us. There was, I don't know how many alarm fire that happened, but a house burned almost to the, I mean, it's, yeah. It burned, and it was, there was, the Cape, the Cape Fire Department was there, along with I don't know how many other fire departments of mutual aid, just a flurry of activity. Unfortunately, you know, as catastrophic as it was, they could not prevent the casualty. But I could tell you from how, I've never been that close to that type of an event, and just to see the intensity of those flames, I can assure you that our Cape Fire Department did everything that was, could have been possible to prevent that casualty of my neighbor and my, his pet. But I can't say enough about Chief Morris, your guys, your crew, the other agencies, the other Cape, or the other fire departments that helped in mutual aid, the other first responders, the PD, everybody for your response. I mean, it, as intense as it was, it was controlled in a relatively short amount of time. And kudos to you guys, and it really makes us appreciate, it really hits home for the work that you guys do every day, putting yourself in danger and harms way to keep us safe. So.
I'd just like to make a comment, following up on some of the other comments about the social media. I think people need to be careful about sharing comments on social media that don't come from credible sources. And when they turn around and share that, and then somebody else shares it, and next thing you know, a whole bunch of people are all saying, well, you know, this is the information. So again, as a former reporter, I would say people need to follow credible media and not listen to or assume to be the truth, things that are, just because they're on Facebook. I've had so many conversations with people who have argued with me about what the city is doing, because they said, well, I saw that on Facebook. And I tell them that I'm on the council, and no, that's not correct. And then they still sit there and say, you know, they don't believe it. So a lot of this, I think, in our community, we need our citizens to become educated. And I think that's, that's a very important part of this.
I don't want to beat a dead horse on the event, but kudos to Doug Gannon, our Parks Director. I saw an email immediately after that happened. And I know it's not because Heather left, our director out there, but I, that, that complex brings in so much activity and tax dollars to our city. I just, I just, I just hope, Doug, you cast a wide net in your search for her replacement. And it is unfortunate. The coaches, they're supposed to be the best stewards of the sport and teaching the kids sportsmanship, discipline, and all of that. And it's just, it's just very unfortunate that it was those two. And I hope that they are suspended indefinitely. You know, people need to feel safe when they're in there and just will not tolerate this kind of behavior. I think the police department did well. Once again, just kudos to you, chief, and your department. That word chief and lieutenant, it carry a lot of weight. It carries a lot of obligations. You know, you might make a little more money and get a little bit more recognition. But what you're doing with your department, chief, is just, I just wish everybody could see what we can see through your financial, your fiscal, what you're doing with that, how you're filling positions. And that chief, whether it's in the Navy, whether it's in a CEO, chief's a big word. And so just keep up the great work, chief. And we don't get to see the chief, the fire chief in here much, but that sure would be great to hear what is all going on with them occasionally. Where is he? Oh, excuse me, chief. Sorry, I was looking, I was looking for a uniform. I'm sorry. Not to cover up.
That is his uniform.
Yeah, well, yeah. But would sure like to hear what is going on with the fire department, you know, upon occasion, training and, and things that you guys are doing, obviously. According to Nate, you guys are on it. There was one off on Amberwood, right over by my house. I think it was a chimney fire. But man, with that, I think there was three trucks over there, and gave people a lot of hope. You guys nipped it in the bud before it became anything more. So fantastic. I guess just want to hear some more from you. My apologies, chief.
Well, and on that point, we typically get an annual report from, from our departments, and we'll certainly, that's going to be coming up.
Mayor, just a brief comment. And it was, it's about something you said earlier, and I don't want to obviously get out in front of you or Dr. Haskin, but you'd mentioned that hopefully some information would be coming out later this week. I guess my question would be for the public, do we know yet what forum that information's going to come out in? Is it going to be through social media or?
It will be a statement to the press regarding some recommendations that we will be making in the coming weeks and months regarding security.
Great, thanks.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, counsel. We have several items for discussion tonight. First, is there anyone in the audience wishing to appear as an advisory board applicant? Nope, all right. Seeing none, then, we will move on to the consent agenda review. Dr. Haskin.
Mayor, we added number six to your review for tonight. It's simply a supplemental agreement, number two, with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly for the construction phase services for taxiway D and E. Mayor, that concludes the review.
All right, thank you, Dr. Haskin. We'll move into regular session, beginning with the call to order and a roll call vote. Ms. Weis-Mueller.
Mr. Bliss?
Here.
Mr. Cantrell?
Here.
Mr. Essex?
Here.
Mayor Kinder?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
All right, counsel, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, then, of adopting the agenda as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The agenda carries. We have one public hearing tonight, and this item will be under new ordinances as well, Bill 2515. But this public, I will open this public hearing to consider vacating the city's interest in parts of various rights of way in the Smelterville subdivision in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Is there anyone wishing to appear for this public hearing? Nope, all right. Hearing none, then, I will, or seeing none, I will close this public hearing. We will move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Young, would you please read that for us?
Bill 2509, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to fund vehicle parking expansion new terminal at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. Bill 2509, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to fund vehicle parking expansion new terminal at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. Bill 2510, an ordinance accepting a permanent waterline easement from properties located at 151 to 159 South Mount Auburn Road in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2510, an ordinance accepting a permanent waterline easement from properties located at 151 to 159 South Mount Auburn Road in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2511, an ordinance accepting a permanent waterline easement from a community counseling center for property located at 1987 Russmar Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2511, an ordinance accepting a permanent waterline easement from a community counseling center for property located at 1987 Russmar Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2513, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute aviation project consultant supplemental agreement number two with Crawford, Murphy, Tilly, Inc. for additional services at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport.
All right, thank you, Mr. Young, counsel. We have a dissent agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, then, of approving the consent agenda as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That agenda carries. Nothing was removed from the consent agenda tonight. We have four new ordinances to consider tonight. As always, we will have our staff member describe the ordinance. At that time, anyone in the public is welcome to have up to three minutes to discuss, and then the council will take it up. So first, Bill 2514, an ordinance approving a second amendment to redevelopment agreement between the city of Cape Girardeau and Ten Mile Holdings LLC. This is the first reading. Mr. Polley.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Haskin, counsel. City of Cape Girardeau and Ten Mile Holding entered into a redevelopment agreement dated back in May 2, 2022, relating to the redevelopment historical Esquire Theater building into office suites with the additional retail space and cafe in the bottom. The original approved redevelopment agreement included a project completion date of June 30, 2023, due to numerous factors such as labor shortages, supply chains, and the project was not completed by the deadline. The application, the applicant requested the first amendment to be completed on December 31, 2024. Well, unfortunately, with shortages, again, with metal and other things, they've requested a second amendment to the redevelopment agreement to complete the project that was not completed on December 31. This project is nearly completed. They currently have a retail space done and some offices already completed up top. They need a little additional time to finish the exterior. The metal has not come in. You have some large electric equipment that has not come in. So they requested a second amendment to the redevelopment agreement with a new date of July 1, 2025 for completion.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment? All right, seeing none. Counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 2514?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Counsel, discussion?
You know, I drive past the Esquire Theater daily. I am just still so thrilled that it is no longer just an abandoned theater. You can see physically on the outside some of the pieces and parts that they're still awaiting arrival of. And so I'm, I've always been thrilled with this project, and I continue to be thrilled with this project, so giving the extra time just seems natural to me.
And just to clarify, this is not changing the terms of the agreement, only shifting it back another six months?
Yes, ma'am. The only thing we changed on the redevelopment agreement was the date from in December to July 1, 2025. That was it. Nothing else has changed.
Any other comments, counsel? All right, seeing none. All in favor, then, of Bill 2514, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 2515, an ordinance vacating the city's interest in parts of various street and alley rights of way in the Smelterville subdivision in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. This is the first reading.
Thank you, Mayor. This vacates part of two streets, four alleyways. This also keeps South Poplar. The reason we're keeping South Poplar is there is a large sewer line under the street, so we don't want to vacate this one. This is to clean up the property and vacations as we move forward with the possibility of selling of this property for the new fire station training site. So we will still own the property, the site, it's just we need to clean this up so it can be sold, if that is acceptable.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this ordinance? All right, seeing none, then, counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 2515?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counsel? All right, all in favor, then, of Bill 2515, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. And Bill 2516, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of temporary construction easements from various property owners for the Cape Brock Drive Sidewalk Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, Grant Projects, in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. This is the first reading. Mr. Polley.
Thank you. This attached ordinance also... This attached ordinance authorized city staff to speak with and acquire 24 temporary construction easements where needed for the Cape Rock Sidewalk TAP Grant Projects from King's Highway to Perryville.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment? Yes. If you would, please state your name and address.
My name is Bill Duffy, and my wife and I live at 907 North Cape Rock Drive in Cape. I do have a visual that all the committee perhaps has related to the sidewalk project. No, it's pictures.
Oh, forgive me, yep.
Okay. So we are on the list of, of people that the city will be, has contacted pertaining to easements. On the visual here, the first picture there is, is the last time the city was on our property and installed a water meter. You can see what that did to our yard, okay? Second page is another view of that. The third page is afterwards, we had to re-sod at the cost of $6,000, re-level our whole front yard. And that yellow line that you see going from the sidewalk or the curb to the water meter, that's where the sidewalk's going to go, okay? Visual, all right? Takes up quite a bit of our yard, you can see. Okay, the fourth page is also, is a different view of the sidewalk from the street, okay? And the fifth page is part of the easements, I think they're requesting is to dig another hole on our property for archaeology reasons or something like that. All right, so what I'd like to talk about is this, we've lived in this house for 33 years, and this is timely because we've all seen what's going on in Cape Rock now. It's sort of a war zone. It's been closed for, since before Thanksgiving. And it's like, okay, this, the sidewalk hasn't even begun yet. You know, I'd been in the, in the finance world for 40 years, first 20 in institutional finance, the second 20 in personal finance. I was a vice president at CMO in the 90s during the big build-out when Ken Dobbins was there, involved in multimillion dollar projects, multimillion dollar bond issues. And, and there's a, there's a common theme that you always look at in these projects, which is what's the cost and what's the benefits? Who benefits and who pays the cost? Now, if you look at these pictures and you look at potentially what's going to be happening to Cape Rock Drive, I mean, now what's going on, but this is nothing compared to what it's going to look like when they start this project. I'm asking the city to step back a little bit because my understanding is that this initial grant was like seven or eight years ago. And, and it may have been, you know, a good idea at the time, for whatever reason, but a lot of time has passed since that initial grant funding. And there's a couple, and so I think, you know, and given my past experience, I think it would be wise to perhaps step back a little bit because I, you know, one question I have, do we know the total cost of this project? Not just Cape's share, the total cost. Do we know that?
Yes.
How much?
Mr. Pulli, I don't know if you have the data with you right now, but.
Phase one has a 60-40-36 federal local cost match with a federal not to exceed the amount of $42,400. The phase two has this 80-20 federal local match not to exceed the amount of $2,064,000. The, in the fall of 2022, the city of Cape Girardeau applied for and was awarded two TAP grants from MoDOT.
No, I mean, I was just saying, total cost.
You're talking about the total project cost?
Total project cost. Ballpark?
It's not to exceed that. So, not to exceed that.
Not to exceed what?
The $422,400.
$422,000?
The federal to not exceed that amount, yes, sir.
Wait a second. Are, are, are you saying that we're going to build a sidewalk from King's Highway all the way to Perry Road and for $420,000?
This is what I've got from the financial impact statement from the engineering. Phase one has a 60-40-36 federal grant not to exceed the amount of 422. So the federal size is going to be 422, which our match is going to be 36%.
Yeah. Wait, wait, that's impossible. I'm sorry. I've been in construction. $400,000 to, to build a sidewalk from King's Highway to Perryville Road, two miles, removing of all of the, the trees and, and the concrete work and link, that does, I'm sorry, that doesn't make any sense.
It's not a street, it's going to be a sidewalk. So the cost factors of sidewalks.
Mr. Duffy?
I, I'm sorry. I, I'm, if, if someone could review the numbers on that, because I don't believe that. I think, I think we're talking, I think we're talking.
Mr. Duffy?
Three to four million.
So every speaker has three minutes to, to make their case. You've done so. I think some additional conversation with, with the folks in the city, presumably Mr. Pulli and others in Public Works would be helpful for you. As you said, this project has been talked about and planned for a long time. And so I don't think we're going to resolve your question right now here tonight.
Okay.
But, but certainly, all the information is public and it might really benefit you and get your answer, get answers to your questions if you could have further conversation with staff.
Yeah, and I think, and, and as it relates, and this isn't just a personal thing, I think it impacts, obviously, that's a broad stretch.
Well, it does. It impacts the entire street.
So I, I'm asking the council this and I will get additional information. I would ask the council to perhaps step back a little bit and look at this whole project because it was like seven, eight years ago, and I think there's a lot happened since then. And obviously inflation has kicked in big time and.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
I know. I'm sorry, I was going to take my wife's three minutes. She was going to be here, so.
I'm learning the game.
But I, I really, so should I expect to hear somebody pertaining to actual cost?
Yes, and, and many, all the details you.
Because I was going to guess five million, so.
Thank you.
And the updated.
Yep.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Pulli?
Well, yeah, let's, I tell you what, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to comment? Okay, hearing none then. Is there a motion to approve Bill 2516?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second because I want to make sure we have conversation.
Yeah. Thank you. Counsel, Ryan, did you have?
Yeah, I guess my question is, is the, the purpose of this particular ordinance is for you to go out and start speaking with property owners to try and acquire easements. This is not authorizing the completion of this project or, or anything thereof. I mean, and what happens, I guess my question is, what happens if Mr. Duffy says, I'm not going to give you a temporary construction easement on my property? Does that blow the whole project up? Or what percentage of property owners need to say no in order to do that? There's a lot of questions, sorry.
This is for your temporary construction easements only. So this allows the city to work, give us a little bit bigger area to work. We can instill, we can still install the sidewalks without the temporary easements. It makes it a lot easier where we can come back, clean up the property, put it back in the original state of the construction easements. Now, this just allows us to start the process. So this is the beginning of the process only. This allows us to speak with them and say, hey, what would you like? What can we do? Tell us where we can work, where we can't, can't. Then we have to contact MoDOT and then work with them, because this is a MoDOT project regarding the easements and tell them what's going on, and then they must approve it. Then we have to come back to you with all the information on this to move forward with the project alone. Now, if we have individuals that refuse to give easements, and this is just your temporary construction only, so can we do the project without them? Some places, yes, we can, because the easement is there. Just like any other easement, you can go to court procedures. We don't like to do those. We don't. We like to work with the community, want to assure them that if we do get on your property a little bit, it's going to be put back into the place, into the state it was before we got on it. Now, I did see the photographs of the first one of the water meter. That wouldn't, I'll tell you, that's been done a couple of years ago. That doesn't look acceptable. I'll tell you that now. I will make sure, and our team will make sure, if we do get on the property, we tear it up, we will put it back to the original state. I will check myself, get with engineering in the morning, find out exactly how much, if the overruns are going to be. This is through TTF 6, so it is going to be very transparent of how much we actually spend, because that's where the, the other amount comes out of, the sidewalk for that project. And I will get with the gentleman and as soon as I get with Jake in the morning, find exactly what the cost is going to be, if there is going to be more costs with the sidewalk.
If I, if I can add, and, and I'm, actually, I'm wanting you to correct me if I'm wrong. This whole project, there's a street project, this is the sidewalk project.
Yes, ma'am, this is the.
And if I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, this sidewalk project was, was identified as, as being necessary because there is, it has been found over the years, a lot of increased pedestrian traffic. What you have to think about is the neighborhood in this area, there's a lot of homes, there's a school, there's a park, and there's also a large park, arena park across King's Highway. That whole intersection has gotten basically upgraded, remodeled, bringing in a lot of upgrades to the pedestrian impact there because it was identified long ago as an important need.
Yes, ma'am. The entire intersection, including different sidewalks, different cuts in the sidewalk to get to the arena park across King's Highway, has been done. They are redoing the road now. It has been closed for some time to actually fix the roads, and now they're going to be starting on a sidewalk. Now, this, the easements and everything is not going to happen overnight. I mean, to acquire temporary easements, require right-of-ways, to require, it takes time. So we'll be reporting back with, and I'll get with Mr., and if he has any other questions, I will make sure I get the answers through engineering and the new price and to move forward so he's very comfortable with what it's going to cost. And if there's other questions he has, I will stay in contact with him. And anybody else in the neighborhood that would like to know, I will make sure they are contacted by myself or engineering themselves.
Good enough, thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I don't, I feel like you said something that wasn't factual because we live on that street. There is not increased pedestrian traffic on that street. There's frankly more deer than there are people who walk that street.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Duffy. Thank you.
But if I hear it's unfactual, I feel compelled to say that.
And I, I stated that because this, this whole project has been studied through CMO, through our Metropolitan Planning Organization. There has been a lot of, of planning and rationale for this project. I do appreciate that you have opinions.
I just appreciate that the city would take a rebuild and follow that.
I just want to say, I sympathize with Mr. Duffy on, first of all, your yard. I want to apologize for that. You have a beautiful yard. The city, I'm not bad mouthing the city, of course, but they replaced a hydrant in the front of my yard, and I wound up spending $400,000 myself putting in where they just threw some seed down and it didn't work. So Trevor, I think that's something that really needs to be looked at, is how, the communications is what really angered me, more than the money that they just left. And there was no communication about, hey, we're going to come back and fix this, this is when we're going to fix this. I think that's something we need to look at when we do disrupt people's yards that obviously I care about, Mike, and Mr. Duffy does also, I think every, most people do. Secondly, the, the money is, is, I mean, if, with our matching, it comes to about $548,000. If it's 30%, if we're 30% of 422, approximately. We're putting in a six-foot wide sidewalk out the avenue of flags, to put flags in. I mean, that's a $600,000 project, and it's only about a half a mile. So I, I don't, I think, obviously, we need to look at that and, and, Mr. Duffy, appreciate your time coming in and discussing this. There's, there's not a sidewalk on, on, it's not on both sides, it's just on one side that we're doing this?
Yes, sir, this side.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I, I just wanted to speak, before you leave, I just wanted to speak, the, the, I want to commend the staff for getting this amount of federal tax money to pay for this because that, you know, it's not all coming out of the city's pocket, and we're capitalizing on money that would otherwise be spent in other communities across the United States, but is now coming back to us and our taxpayers by being able to help pay for this money through the TAP grant, the federal TAP grant. And as someone who lives on a heavily trafficked road with an uncontinuous or non-continuous sidewalk, I would kill to have a continuous sidewalk, just for that ability to have that pedestrian traffic and to do it safely. And like was pointed out, there is a park, I've lived over near that park before, and then you have arena park, and it could be great for the whole residential community there to have that active community lifestyle up and down that, that street, and to be able to use the federal tax dollars to offset that, as well as been around long enough now, I guess, that I do know that, to answer the overage question, is that this was identified as a priority for our TTF 6, for our sidewalk project. So that transportation trust fund sales tax that we collect was identified for, to cover the overage on this as a project that was outlined in, in that tax initiative. So it, yes, it, it'll be more than what the tax, the federal tax dollars are, but I, I, like I said, I, I would take it in a heartbeat in my community to be able to go up and down with my kids on a continuous sidewalk, back and forth, and exercise, or just have my kids walk to their friend's house, or whatever it might be.
I think it comes down to who's the benefit, I don't see it as property, the property owners, who's the beneficiary of this project? It's not the property owners, I will tell you that much, but who's paying the cost? The property owners.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
There's a disconnect.
Thank you.
And all I'm saying is that the city sort of look at the disconnect between cost benefit.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duffy. Any further discussion, counsel?
Yeah, one more time, just to be clear one more time tonight, this is going to come back before the city council, multiple times before this project ever starts, right?
Yes, it will.
So tonight, just going to start talking to land, going to start talking to people about temporary construction easements.
Yes. That is going to start just a temporary construction easement only.
Well, and it's worth noting, this whole thing has been before the council many times previous to tonight.
Yeah, I remember it. I was on council when, when TTF 6 was being voted on. I remember the Cape Rock project, and I remember, I can't remember what it was, which, which big, large city study it was, that, you know, I remember Ryan Shrimplin coming in here and talking about the city and the priority to become more pedestrian friendly. I get all of that, I'm just saying that, you know, now we're, it's, it's going to come back a few more times and we'll have some harder numbers the next time.
Now, in the morning, I will get the hard numbers of exactly what it's going to be costing, close to what it will be.
Sure.
And I will provide that to the gentleman, also send to council so they can see it was set off.
Sounds good.
Thanks. All right, all those then in favor of Bill 2516, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. And lastly, we have Bill 2517, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an air traffic control tower operating assistance grant agreement for fiscal year 2024, 2025 with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. This is the first reading. Mr. Stewart?
Two meetings in rows.
Yeah, what a, this is great.
Counsel, mayor, Dr. Haskins. So this is a grant through MoDOT, it's an annual grant. They're allowed to go up to $167,000 a year through the jet fuel tax legislation that they collect from. So they award us $160,000 a year, and that goes towards our operating expense, it covers about 44% of our operating expense for our control tower here at the city.
Excellent. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this issue? All right, seeing none then, counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 2517?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, discussion, counsel?
I, I'd just like to point out, we all know with all the experiences of in Washington, DC, how important air traffic control towers are. And I, I, I think it's, you know, obviously vital to have, and when you can tap into funding through the state, that, that is a great thing. So I'm happy we have our control tower and it's well-funded.